Check, check. Okay. Everybody ready to go?
Yep.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. I hereby call the Monday, February 12th, 2024 Cumberland Town Council Meeting to order. Just a few items of business here. We had a 6:00 PM workshop regarding the development of a town council handbook. Was about as exciting as it sounds. And then we are now in the regular town council meeting at 7:00 here. So first item of business is the approval of the minutes. That was from our January 22nd, 2024 meeting.
So moved.
I read the whole thing. It was a long slog, but I second.
Okay, we have a motion and we have a second. Any questions?
I have some comments. I just spoke with Bill in the hall about the, some comments about his report that he delivered as part of his manager's report last time. So he's, we're gonna talk when he does his manager's report.
Okay.
He'll bring that back up because I thought there might be some points. Well, I had questions and some points, so.
In a minute.
No, I don't think, I think she's talking about whether.
It should be addressed during the minutes or not. They weren't.
Probably as part of manager's report.
Yeah, I just wondered how you wanted to. Yeah, probably the manager's report is the best place to do it.
But maybe we can move forward with a motion on whether we accept the minutes as they were prepared based on what was provided.
Correct.
Okay. So all those in favor? Okay, unanimous. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the manager's report. Mr. Manager?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll try to pull up the minutes at the same time. So just a couple of quick items. I, we will not be ready to start on February 26th with the budget presentation. We've got some not so great information from the state this week, this past week that we will be seeing about a $200,000 drop in our revenue sharing next year, which obviously puts a pretty good hole in the budget. So we also be looking at a serious reduction in trash bags because about halfway through the year, this year especially, we'll be, we'll be switching over to the automated collection in curbside. So we'll be losing a couple hundred thousand in trash bag revenues as well. So there are just a couple of elements that we're still trying to tweak through and I'd rather wait till March 11th and give you a full, full presentation than kind of half-baked. So we're gonna, we're, we're gonna delay with your permission the first meeting on the budget, changing that to March 11th. I still want to meet at 5:00 PM on the 26th. We have a bunch of items that I'd like to get through. One of those items would be the cost sharing with North Yarmouth on the SAD. I've been working with Councilor Story King and we've been just looking at the data over the last 10 or 15 years and honestly, we haven't had a discussion over 60 years on how we do the cost sharing. It's been always on valuation and there are different models out there now that I think would be helpful for the full council to see in workshop and see what that might look like going forward. So that's one of the items we want to talk about. We also want to talk about some of the AV equipment that we're looking to change over in this facility. One of the exciting things we're looking at is trying to do the workaround from Time Warner. If you have a smart TV, you cannot watch Channel 2, you cannot watch us. But we're software now. It's a Roku-type software workaround that we can get that back. And also, at the same time, be compliant for those that have hearing disabilities, adding closed caption to our broadcast, which I think we've got to get, we used to have a lot more viewers than we have today. So for me, getting closed caption back, I think, would be really great and would really enhance our ability to communicate with all our citizens. So for me, I think these are exciting things and we'll bring those to you on the 26th. And then we'll basically do kind of a DEI update that night on where things are around us, around our community and around surrounding communities as well. So a lot of things packed in that meeting on the 26th. We'll start at 5:00 and we'll start the regular council meeting at 7:00 that night. So a lot of things.
Mr. Manager, I had a question for you on the revenue sharing. I don't know if you know this information yet. You might not because I think you just heard today or something. But is there, do they know why there's such a shortfall there? Is it because there's just a lack of spending, consumer spending or something in the state that has produced less revenue? Because I don't think the percentage has changed, right?
Well, no, the percentage is based on the sales tax. It's 5% and it's basically divided amongst the communities through valuation and population. And when we look at that, those numbers, they have really been going up. I mean, we were at, you know, 350,000 just six, seven, eight years ago, and now we're over at 1.7 million this last year. So I think we hit the peak and now we're just kind of stabilizing. So I don't know if we'll see another rebound there, but we see, we've seen the same thing with excise tax. If you remember, excise tax was just screaming up and we just really even couldn't project it. It was just people were buying a lot of cars. I think as interest rates come back down again, I think we'll see that rebound. But for next year, excise tax as well, we're projecting to be flat. And those are our two biggest revenue sources. So we don't want to go into the budget with a hole. And I've heard more positive news on the school side. They feel there will be more funding for the SAD next year. So that's, that's a positive. But they also have teacher contracts next year and we have three union contracts next year too. So we want to go into this where our eyes wide open and I'm not quite there yet. So that, that's more to come. And I'm still trying to get to the town website, so.
Did I see where our Saturday budget meeting is canceled?
Yeah.
Are we gonna be able to get all the work done?
I, I think in talking with the manager, we talked that we thought we would be able to get all the work done as part of the three Monday budget meetings that we have and then provide maybe one or two, probably two public meetings in, would it be April at that point?
It would be. It would be part of the April, April council meetings where we do more of an extended presentation and get more, a lot more public comment.
Just to increase the number of folks who are able to maybe attend. I think one of the concerns, I've been to a lot of those Saturday morning things and not that many folks from the public generally attend. I always enjoyed coming to them. But I think that was an idea that we want to make sure more folks are able to come to those. And so maybe have two of those presentations, two opportunities for folks to come instead of just a one Saturday session, kind of if that makes sense.
There were also an opening day of Little League last year. I think that made it really difficult for a lot of folks to attend.
Yeah, that was correct.
I was concerned because some people can't make it during the week.
Oh.
It used to be we had them only on Saturday mornings.
Oh, budget meetings? Yeah.
And then we, and then we moved them to, I think last year, didn't we meet every Monday even on non, non-council meetings?
Yeah.
So I would propose that we maybe, if we're finding that we're not getting through it, that we might.
Add some additional days.
Yeah.
Are they recorded?
They, the budget meetings would not be.
The budget meetings were not recorded. They were workshop meetings. And they're, they're still proposed to be workshop meetings before the council. I mean, we could record them. It's a little, well, we could change the format. I mean, you guys could sit at the dais and we could sit so that the camera, that we could have audio and we could do it if you want to do it that way.
Yeah, that might be in.
Might be worth exploring if we get more viewership.
Yeah, it's easy to do.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, now I have the minutes off. Sorry, Shirley.
No, that's all right. Thank you for bringing this back up. I was going through this and, and so I just had a couple of responses really under, nothing at the very beginning on that first page, but under this, under the what we've spent our TIF funds on.
This, right here? Yeah, I gotta try to make it.
Yes, that. Something, I think we, you left some things off, like isn't the fire department, wasn't that fire department expansion on something we did with TIF revenue?
It was.
And did we buy that new fire truck with TIF revenue?
Uh, we did not.
We did not?
Not the, not the ladder truck, no.
But the fire department, I know that we did.
Part of the, yep.
That was deliberate because of natural gas and the needing, needing a larger.
Partially natural gas, partially just the growth of the community. We were able to add that to several TIF districts.
And I don't know, I just, I kind of think for full transparency that prorated town staff salaries could be something that was added to that.
That's absolutely correct.
Because I think people ought to know. That's, that's all. I was wondering, so if you go back up to the, the buckets under the Ocean View. Nope, next set of buckets. That set of buckets. So first of all, I think the average 24 million dollars. Oh, wait. Where was I looking at? 24 million. I must have been looking at an old presentation because I think you totaled. There, it was, at one point, it was 24 million and I think that was the total over the 48 years. Never mind on that comment.
I don't know.
See where it says average 550,000 until 24?
Into each bucket, yeah.
Yeah, okay. But I think for full transparency, I think there ought to be some sort of comment or addition that every year the town council decides what that percentage is.
Yeah, I think that's fair. And I think that's what I said at the, the neighborhood meeting, the last neighborhood meeting. I said, my recommendation of the council this year will be to freeze the amount of money that we've already given to the general fund from Ocean View right there. I think it's about 240,000.
Yep.
Leave it there until we know what we're gonna do with it.
And I thought that was really important for everybody to know. So since this is part of public document and public record and available online for people to see, I thought it was important for people to understand that. And if some year, like.
Well, you have one of those some years coming up. If, if the bond is passed in June, you will have a year where you may have to say, we have to slide more over to the general fund.
Right.
Absolutely will.
I think what my point is, and I, I want to be respectful when I, when I say it, is there's been some pushback about connecting Little League to this project. And my point that I responded, I said last, our last meeting, there was a verbal commitment on the council's part to help Little League, whether this goes through or not.
Exactly.
And I want the public to know that. But also that you have recreation spaces underneath the 50% TIF fund, which is fine. But I don't know if there's a way to put it under the 50%, also under the 50% general fund.
Oh, absolutely.
Because you, we, we spend for recreational spaces out of general fund.
Right. We do it now for Twin Brooks and Valhalla and everywhere else.
For future, for future planning and strategic planning, you know, it's not just baseball that needs fields. We need more soccer fields. We, people are, I've already heard people talking about turf fields. Well, I personally don't like the, what I've read about the medical, you know, the risks of cancer developing in goalies from a turf field. But to have our spring and fall sports teams going to Yarmouth or to some other place because our fields are too muddy, that doesn't seem very cost-effective either, that you can get more kids on a turf field over the course of a day. So it's, it's part of the discussion that needs to be happening, not just baseball. So I don't know if there's a way to represent that in those buckets.
Well, I can also attach my presentation that I had at the last meeting at Valhalla to the minutes tonight if the council chooses because that will reflect that basically the council, year to year, will have the opportunity to slide more money to the general fund or leave it in the TIF fund. And I think that gets away from the confusion of how much money is already dedicated to the general fund because Ocean View isn't fully built out yet. It's barely halfway there. So it will, it will probably even be more than what I've depicted here. So each council will have the opportunity every year to slide it back and forth. And, you know, TIF District 1, there'll be a discussion during the budget process whether the town wants to look at transit, especially trains and metro in the community in the future that could be paid for by TIF District 1.
Okay.
Because that's going to expire in two years. So, I mean, we, we've had those conversations interjected in both of those meetings we've had so far down at Valhalla.
Yeah. And I want, so I just wanted the record to be.
Yeah.
Fully transparent. And then there was one more thing that I had, and this is really kind of a council issue, but as we start our budget process, I want us to start thinking about the TIF funds, not in what we can do with them, but what we, what we need to do. And that goes back to what we were talking about earlier, setting some priorities and strategic goals for, geez, we need water here. How are we gonna make that happen? Do we need to put more money in the general fund? Or, you know, we need to. It's just how, how we look at spending the TIF money. Let's not put all, all sorts of money into TIF when we might be needing some other things that don't qualify under TIF, especially with eight where it's so flexible.
Yeah.
It could be, you know, 100% into general fund and zero into TIF or, you know, 50/50 or, like you said, 37, 63.
But just can you clarify? I think TIF District 8 is the only district that allows that throttling up or throttling down currently, right?
Today, TIF District 1, we'll probably bring back to you and it probably won't be ready. Hopefully it'll be before I go to give you the authority to do something very similar. But it'll be unique in a sense that 75% of that money would have to go to transit or affordable housing. So you really only have about 25% you could use flexibility with. But I would try to get that same ability for you to throttle it up or down.
Okay.
But you're denoting like capital projects, right?
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah. Those are, I mean, you can do other things, but they don't make sense because that's like, you know, refinancing your house to buy a car.
Correct.
Which doesn't make sense.
Correct.
Yeah.
And will you give us this year in our budget stuff an updated TIF projection?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
And that's all I had about those kind of things. So thank you for humoring me, everyone.
Anybody else? Mr. Manager, did you have other stuff to discuss?
No, I'll, I'll leave it at that.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Okay, moving on from manager's report, we will move to public discussion. Public discussion is for comments on items that are not on the agenda. Comments are limited to five minutes per person. Rebuttal comments will be limited to two minutes. Public discussion topics may be brought up again under new business for further council discussion. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address the council on a topic that's not on the agenda this evening? Please. If you don't mind just stating your name and where you live.
My name is Brenda Sherwin. I live in West Cumberland. I've been talking to my neighbors about affordable housing. So I, if you talk to any of my daycare kids, I will put up with a lot of bad behavior, but I will not put up with lying and half-truths. So when I talk to people, I want to make sure I know what I'm talking about. One person who were out with me, this person who was, we were talking to said, if we don't use the 3 million to move, move the ball fields, it goes away. We don't, we can't. That's the only way we can use it. It goes away. That is not true. Right? I want that publicly known, okay? Another thing, so we have a pile of TIF money. And I said, well, somebody asked me about TIF and I said, well, I think they're thinking about building a tower. Is that true?
Radio tower for public safety.
Okay. That's not for cell phones?
No.
Oh, well.
What we would try to do is get a cellphone company to pay for the tower and we would get a lease annually from that company. We've, we have not been successful yet to getting two companies.
Well, I will tell you, a lot of the neighbors in West Cumberland would love it because it's not great reception in our area. Okay. The, another person asked me about 25. Is the speed limit from center of town down Tuttle Road to the blinking light going to be 25? Miles per hour?
We have a 25 mile an hour zone to, almost to the top of the hill, right after Drown Road now, from, that's, that's what it is now, correct?
It's 15 with blinking lights.
Well, with the school zone, during school is 15, right? But it's 25 miles an hour every rest of the town.
Well, somebody asked me and I said, I don't know. I'm here. Another person said the new development. They heard that there will be, there wasn't going to be an elevator for the third floor. And I said, I can't believe that, but I'm, I'm asking that question.
That's incorrect. There are elevators in all three buildings.
That's what I thought. Okay. The other thing is, I was surprised. How many people thought because you lived in town, you're first on the list? That is not true.
That was explained that we cannot, we cannot discriminate.
I know it's a federal program. I get that.
Right. We cannot discriminate, but they would try to market it first to Cumberland residents, similar to what we did at Drown Road when we opened that up.
I'm just telling what people have said. I'm trying to get my facts for people. A lot of people had made comments about how fast you're pushing this through. Especially, they thought that they should, we should figure out the school problem and then this. And that's a comment I'm just telling you that what a lot of people have talked to me about. They, and I agree with this. I think this better project would be out on Route 1, 1. You can pick up the bus. There's more services out here. You put it in the center, you're gonna have to have a car to do anything. And as you get older, and this was a lot of comments, is you're not gonna have a garage. At 80-year-old, 80-year-olds, we don't want to go out and scrape our car because we gotta go to grocery store because there's no grocery stores in walking distance. The walk to the lot, post office is going to be a walk for some people. That was a comment I heard. The other thing was, is it going to be laundry in the buildings?
Yes.
Okay. School, 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 school. That's all I'm gonna say about that. Gravel pit, West Cumberland. I heard that, I've seen plans, we're gonna put houses and stuff in the pit, which I would never live in a pit, but that's okay. That's me. Does that come before the council and the town as for a vote?
No.
That goes just to the planning board and we have no say?
That is correct.
So you're gonna drive the bus over the rest of the council?
You have a say at the planning board public hearings.
So basically, I, I'm against this. I would not give up my house and all my, a lot of my neighbors are elderly. They're on one social security. They don't even know if they can afford the rent. I thought when Mr. Hale brought this up, I thought, oh, finally, somebody wants to keep these people in their homes. They've been good citizens of this town. They've volunteered. They worked at the school. We, we did T-ball. We did Boy Scouts, you know, all this stuff. And you're not, there's no programs to keep these people. You don't care. It's almost like, you, you listen to these people and I heard you say, well, we hear you. Well, I could say something, but I'm not. It's like, these are the people I thought you would keep in your, their home. You're gonna raise their taxes. I don't care if it's 1250, which is not true. I don't believe it's true in the end. But that's what I'm, I'm worried about, is these elderly people that have been here all our lives, my life, and I've been here 40-plus years. So I'm not a lifer. I moved into this town. I like, I like the little fields as they are. My last comment is. I'd like to say thank you from Mr. Story King and Ron Cop. They've lived in this town all their lives. They put, they dedicated their town, time on this council and I feel they're being pushed out. That bothers me. It bothers me because we won't have a good representation. We have too many newbies here, as you can tell by my stop sign. The first count was seven to zero. Last time it wasn't. That's, and, and now I'm gonna, and I, I'm for affordable housing. I did soup kitchen for 35 years until I couldn't get help to do it. I am for helping people. Don't get me wrong. I just don't think this is a good place for it. And I think you're pushing it too fast. And I think we need to be, like Story King, more transparent what's going on with this council. And another comment was made at a group meeting we had at my house for my mother. We had a sign. My mother has moved in with me. She's gonna be 102 very shortly. So I'm trying to keep her where she should be. The thing there said, we voted you people to take care of us. I hate to say it that way, but, you know, we put our trust in you. And almost to a T, everybody there said they're disappointed in you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else from the public like to address the council on a topic not on the agenda?
I apologize if I, I'm not feeling well. I, I've got an asthma problem. I've had it for several weeks. I'm gonna do my best here. It's Bruce Sherwood Blanchard Road. I hope that I get more than five minutes if I need it, because my wife did. So here we go. I got some things also that are confusing people out there that I want to get straight for them. And they concern, the school-aged children comparing the Route 1 apartments to potential for affordable housing up here in town. That's comparing apples and oranges, folks. That depart, that development down on Route 1, I went down to it yet. That depart, that development down on Route One, I went down to it yesterday, it's very un-kid-friendly. It doesn't even look like Cumberland, it looks like the stuff over on Spring Street in Westbrook or Witter, Bitterford or something. It's not kid-friendly. Too many cars, not enough place to play or anything. We're trying to attract families to affordable housing, there's gonna be playgrounds near it, residential houses where kids will be playing, there's no comparison between those two. As a matter of fact, my wife ran a daycare, as many of you know, we had a couple of kids that moved into that housing down there on Route One and moved out because it was too expensive and because no place for kids to play. Using the number from that place is ridiculous. We're trying to help families up here, we're gonna have families move in with kids if this thing approaches, so we need to be realistic about the number of kids that are going to school. Tight in with that, the developer estimates thirty-six kids, not twenty-three, as you folks are saying, or Mr. Broder is saying in this week's forecaster in, in the forum, that's a ridiculous number too. We go with the, the expert who's done a lot of these developments, thirty-six, I think it could be more. I think there's fifty-one extra rooms here, we could have fifty. And, and so if you do, if you use that also, you need to plan for the worst and hope for the best when you do a plan financially. You don't plan for the best and then just hope the worst doesn't happen, you need to be ready for it. We need to be ready for thirty-six or fifty kids there to pay for them. And this development is not gonna pay for them. We'll talk, I'm gonna talk about that now. If you do thirty-six kids in that, it costs us taxpayers in town six hundred and eight thousand five hundred and twenty-eight, including town costs for that timeframe, per year. Six hundred and eight thousand dollars a year, times twenty years is twelve million. And where do we get the twenty years from? That's how long this TIF is. I've been told it goes through two thousand forty-eight, so it's twenty-plus years. I'm using twenty because it's gonna take a few years to get it open, if it opens. So that's twelve million dollars us taxpayers are gonna have to come up with. So let's talk about the three hundred and eighty-four thousand that Mr. Broder mentioned in his forecaster and I've heard two eighty-four and two fifty and five hundred. All of that money is Ocean View money. It's got nothing to do with this project, we get that anyway, and it's voted on annually. We can't count on that every year, it might be needed for other projects. That's a pipe dream, using that number. This project is not going to generate any money for the general fund or school. We're gonna have a hundred and seven households with two hundred to three hundred people using town services and school services and paying zero. Their landlord will pay zero, therefore they're paying zero. And that's gonna be for twenty years and I don't know about you, but maybe I'm different, but I'm gonna have trouble driving by that place and not feeling a little resentment that I'm footing the bill and they're not. That's a tough thing to swallow, folks, and I think this is the truth. I'm, I'm straightening out things that people are asking me out there like my wife, when I go around talking to people. And they're getting incorrect information from Mr. Broder in that article and from other people. They need to know the correct information. Now I want to talk quickly about the ball field. Three million dollars to move, we've been told to move two fields, it's really to build four fields in a different place. We're, we're not even told honestly what that's about. And, and then I had, I estimate two hundred thousand dollars for the fifteen plus or minus acres involved of two lots. That's three million two hundred thousand dollars that normally the developer would pay to get the site ready for use and buy the land. It's, you know, that's, that's taxpayer money, folks out there. That's TIF money. TIF money is our money. A lot of people think TIF money is kind of outside money that comes from who knows where. It's not, it's our money. We can spend that on ball fields or we can spend it on fixing up Blanchard Road extension that needs some work for safety. We can do a lot of different things with it, so.
We, we can extend your time if you'd like your rebuttal time now, the additional two minutes?
I'm, I'm, I'm very near done. These, these are the only three big topics I, topics I was gonna talk about, so I just want, that's our money out there. Some people have asked, like my wife said, does it go away if we don't use it? That's what they've been told. It doesn't go away, it goes back into the TIF fund for use something else. And I'm a little discouraged that we tried to tip the scales tying Little League ball fields to an affordable house question and there's no mention of it in the referendum. This is not transparent operations. So, that's it for, for me. I'm not feeling well, so my wife and I are leaving after this. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, hope you get to feeling better. Anyone else from the public have any comments that are not on the agenda?
Yes, you are.
Yes, please.
Dottie Spalding, Greeley Road. I really don't like public speaking, but I would like to say that I'm going to vote no on the Drown Road school, not because it's in my backyard, because it's not, and not because I'm against affordable housing, because I'm not. I think it's a good thing. I don't think it's a good thing for this particular, I don't like the design of it and there are several other reasons that I, I really don't like it, but voting against affordable housing is not one of them. But I do want to say that I agree with Mr. and Mrs. Sherwin, that it seems to me that in the very beginning, you knew what you were going to vote for. You, you listened, you heard us, you heard all the people speak, and I've been to several of the meetings and I've heard people who have, and are, are like me, not public speakers, but apparently it's an important item for them, and so they get up and they speak and they pour their hearts out, and I see the eye-rolling from some of the counselors and I see or hear some of the condescending messages that come back. I am getting tired and maybe it's the political way the country is being run this, these days, but the divisiveness and the nastiness is unnecessary. You have a right to your opinion, I have a right to mine. That doesn't make you right, that doesn't make me wrong or vice versa. And it just seems like if you don't agree, you hear this nasty rhetoric all over social media. And it seems to me that the council has just pushed this through, I feel the same way that they do, it's just been pushed through and no matter what these people have said, that they didn't like it or whatever, it didn't matter. It was gonna go through and it was gonna go through the way you wanted it. My idea of the council is that you are working for us, you're supposed to be listening to us, and in my view, only a couple of you really are, two or three of you really are. And I have to commend both Shirley, Story King and Mike Eads and sometimes Ron Cop for listening and doing the right thing and, and they do know the community. And this community is changing. I've lived here since nineteen sixty-four, it never was like this, it never was divisive, it was a nice place to live. I'd like to stay here, I'd like to die here, and I hope that you're gonna let me do that. But if you reevaluate the town and my taxes go way up, I'm not gonna be able to stay. My fervent desire is to die in my home on Greeley Road where I've lived since nineteen sixty-four. But what we need, and the one thing that I would just like to get across is that we need kindness, we need compassion, we need you to listen, not just hear us, but listen. Kindness starts with each of us and we need to pass it on. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public like to address the council on an item that's not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, we will close public discussion and we will move to legislation and policy. First item on the agenda is twenty-four dash zero zero seven, to hold a public hearing to consider and act on forwarding to the planning board for a public hearing and recommendation amendments to Chapter three fifteen zoning to add private outdoor recreational improvements as recommended by the ordinance committee. I generally understand what's happening here, but maybe someone from ordinance might be willing to kind of jump in, maybe with a little background as to what the changes are and why we're making them?
Sure, we've had some issues in a neighborhood in East Cumberland, I'll just call it East Cumberland, and the neighbors brought this matter of concern to the code enforcement officer and it turns out, according to his interpretation, that our ordinances only cover sort of public outdoor recreational facilities. So this is an attempt to also make sure that private outdoor recreational improvements or facilities go with, meet our, our standards for lot setback, for light pollution, for all sound, noise, whatever that we need to add. So that's the genesis of this particular ordinance change.
Okay.
Yeah, this, this came about from a project that, you know, I used to say in police work, you've seen everything and then somebody comes along and says, hold, hold my beer. And that's what happened here, this, a project sprung up in one of the neighborhoods that when you tell people about it, they don't think you're telling the truth. Huge invasion on people's privacy in this neighborhood and our ordinance did not cover because nobody thought anything like this would ever happen. So I, I think we've hit the high spots of what needs to be done to protect the neighborhoods.
Just one question. Bill, I know during our ordinance meeting, we chatted briefly about potential licensing. Did Alyssa come back with anything on that?
Uh, yes, she did. We spoke today at length about licensing and remember, this ordinance is gonna cover basketball courts, pickleball courts, ice skating rinks, basically outdoor facilities that are over six hundred square feet or twenty by thirty is six hundred square feet. So we thought, and she would recommend, as the code officer would as well, that we implement the ordinance, send it to the planning board, get their recommendation, come back, put it in force and then give it some time to see how it works. If there are problems related to this, if it's not, if it's just not working well, then we can go with a licensing ordinance that would require permitting annually and could be done by the councils, could be done through the code office, through the zoning board, Board of Appeals. There are multitude facets we could use, but I think everybody on board felt that let's, let's go into this a little slower so that we don't, we don't overburden the public and that we see how it's working. Because I think the majority of people, and I'm talking the greatest majority of people, will be fairly compliant with what we've put together as an ordinance and it would be in all the residential zones. So it would be applied across the community in all the residential zones and if you adhere to the criteria that's in the ordinance, it's, as Mike said, you know, just be decent about noise, just be decent about lighting so you're not just blowing spotlights everywhere and, you know, putting up mega, mega speaker systems that, you know, your whole neighborhood can hear. All of those things are kind of addressed through some very, very simplistic ordinance requirements and most people will comply with those. So I believe that we're going in the right direction and I think that this will be helpful to the neighborhood, but to the entire community in the future.
Great, thank you.
But, Mr. Chairman, I, I want to make sure we assure the public that we're not going after somebody who's got a basketball court or a basketball hoop up in the yard or somebody sets up a temporary hockey rink so the kids can play hockey outside. We're not, we're not going after that. We're going after regulating basically invade, invasion of neighborhoods, which is what's, what's happened and why we're here today.
Great, thank you. Councilor Phil.
I'd like to just cover this on a, on a, on a different level. From a practical standpoint, if somebody wants to build a house or put a shed or construct even a, a business facility, they, they have to submit a set of plans, they have to submit drawings, they have to fill out a building permit and there's, and there's a process and a review. And so the biggest thing for me is, as a builder, is thinking that somebody can come in with a bulldozer or, or an excavator, they can knock down ten acres of trees and they can disrupt water courses and, you know, backfill, put drainage dishes that, and without an ability for the town to have some kind of oversight as to somebody who is building on their property without requiring a permit, which is what we've had in the past, now there's a mechanism where there's, there's a little bit more protection for the environment, a little more protection for what's actually going on, on the ground. When you start putting rebar and concrete down, that's, that typically signifies that's a permanent change, something that's, a structure's gonna be there a while. So that, I think it's, from, in fact, my background as a builder, this is an important step to, it's, it's a minor inconvenience for someone to have to get out and get a building permit, but it's a major success point in supervising landscape changes and things that, you know, you take, you know, you want to plant a tree, plant it today for eight, twenty years, but when you cut it down, it's gone. So I think that the intention of the ordinance is twofold, it really is addressing some, some neighborhood concerns, but I think in the, in the, in the, in the larger scheme, there's, there's much better protection for what goes on in the community.
Well said, Bill.
Yeah.
Great, so it looks like there's obviously some major changes in terms of defining what a private outdoor recreational improvement is. We talked about the exceeding six hundred square feet. There's also making sure it's clear that all private outdoor recreational improvements, not to what Mike talked about, small, you know, basketball courts or basketball hoops, if you put them out in the driveway or a temporary ice skating rink or something like that would not apply, but that those would be considered structures within the meaning of the chapter. And then obviously a lot of this is just making sure that that definition is added throughout the code all the way through. So I think the, any questions, I guess, about these changes? I know I read through them before the meeting, any questions about the, the red line changes that are gonna be forwarded to the planning board? Please, Councilor Wilson.
Sorry, I was curious about how are we measuring, so Section E excessive illumination is prohibited. How does one measure that from a violation perspective and is that something that the police would take on or is the code enforcement officer taking that on or?
It's light trespass across the property line, it should be zero lumens essentially and that, that's measurable light amount. Those are easy meters to use, we use them in codes, we use them when we do parking lots and so forth, so that, that's an easy measurement, just so you don't have a spotlight shining right at your windows and property so forth. So we require that, that light that's put up is put up at such an angle that it doesn't trespass over the property lines.
So if the, say, say your kind of hockey rink is built, right, and then you install and it's approved by the code officer and then you decide that, oh, hey, I might want to start playing at night and then a year and a half later you install those lights, are they then going back to the code officer to have them come out and measure that or?
It's, it is a permitted use, so i- if they comply with the ordinance, which is the light, if they're, and we don't, typically these things are generated by a complaint. So a neighbor may have a complaint, they call the code officer and he'll come out and basically investigate and see if it actually is a cutoff type fixture, if it's setback from the property line, a proper amount. Right now, we don't have any standards, you can go right up to the property line, so I think the standards that we've put in are, are measurable and are enforceable.
Okay.
So I don't think that would be the issue, I think the, the noise piece will be a little bit harder.
And that's on our next?
That's, no, that's, that's in the ordinance too, for future. Basically, seventy decibels, I think, at the property line with this, with this, with this type of use. There was a section in there that's.
Yeah, Section D, certain noise prohibited.
It's the last section, I think.
Right above the illumination.
Right, right, okay, got it.
Yep.
Sixty decibels.
Bill, thanks for you, you and your staff for helping us. You guys were great today at work.
They, they worked hard at it, I think it's, I think it's a good start.
And it's the first of its kind.
Yep. Also, thank you to the ordinance committee for jumping on this so quickly, I know there are many folks in the.
I don't think we've assuaged the concerns of the neighbors because it's already done.
Right.
But if there are any changes in the future, it'll have to go through this process.
Please.
I mean, I, I would just kind of note that I certainly, I haven't been to the site, I've seen some, you know, photos and kind of understand the backstory about why kind of a lot of this has come up, but to Dottie's point earlier about kind of leading with kindness and talking to our neighbors, I would hope that before certain things are escalated to the code officer or, you know, if we're between the hours of ten PM and six AM and there's a lot of noise happening, you know, conceivably they're probably calling the police, not, you know, firing email off to Bill Longley. I was, I would hope that, you know, folks are also able to kind of take that first step at going and knocking on the door and saying, hey, you know, maybe you could turn, turn it down a little bit. We do karaoke in our barn on Main Street and all of our neighbors around. We do karaoke in our barn on Main Street and all of our neighbors around us come over and sing karaoke and do the limbo and I think that's a wonderful thing. If there was a neighbor that, you know, didn't, didn't like that or we were making too much noise, of course, I would hope that they would cross the street and come and say, you know, knock it off, guys, we've got, you know, you're making too much noise rather than kind of going to the, you know, going to the police is kind of the first rate of refusal, if that makes sense. But I guess we can't enforce that and make it an ordinance, but I would hope it would be a best practice.
I think this came to us because that had been attempted and.
A few times.
A few times. And it's been an ongoing construction project for not just this, but I think it's just construction fatigue among the neighbors.
Any other questions or comments about the, I guess, updates to the code there?
When you're ready, Mr.
Please, Councilor E.
Public hearing.
Oh, excuse me, yes. So any comments from the public? Thank you very much on this, please. Dave Noonan, Meadow Lane. So will this be, if this, when this gets voted on, will this go to planning board on the next meeting?
A, May, March, maybe, March.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the public? Okay. Seeing none. Yep, I would accept.
All three, Mike?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, I move to forward to the planning board for a public hearing and recommendation amendments to chapter 315 zoning to add private outdoor recreational improvements as recommended by the ordinance committee.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and we have a second. Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor? Unanimous. Okay, moving next to 24 dash 008, to hold a public hearing to consider and act on forwarding to the planning board for a public hearing and recommendation amendments to chapter 315 zoning, section 21, Town Center District, F6, hours of operation as recommended by the ordinance committee. So this strikes me as a slightly different issue, still dealing with zoning, but dealing specifically with how late businesses in the Town Center District are able to stay open. I know, Councilor E, you brought this up, maybe, I don't know if that was just off the cuff with the manager.
No, no.
Maybe you can give it, give us a lead on this.
So I had the opportunity right after Christmas to stop into one of the businesses on Main Street, Rise, and I got talking to Toby, the owner, and we were just talking to how, just in general, how it was going and so on and so forth. And I, I should have known, but I didn't know that there was a mandatory, even on a Thursday, Friday, Saturday night, that he had to close at nine o'clock. You know, when we have a football game, getting out at nine o'clock, 9:30, customers are driving by, people want to stop, get a bite to eat, take home, he was locking his doors. And this is, this, to me, this proposal is one of the reasons that I get on the council is to help our businesses, businesses and our residents, basically, how can we make it better feel? My wife and I with another couple went down, had dinner there the other night. I, I, if you haven't been, you, you gotta go. It's a great place. But what I really looked at was when I went out in the parking lot, what kind of noise was there? And there wasn't any. Everything's inside. Toby's not running bands, they're not playing late. So I don't find this would be any invasion on the neighborhood, but it will, it would allow, and allow us to support businesses along the Main Street. So for me, for me personally, this is kind of a no-brainer to do this. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
No, thank you. Any other comments or questions on that? Looks like we're looking to extend, the change would effectively be a pretty much whole week long, 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM, and then on, that would remain 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM, Sunday through Wednesday, and then on Thursday, Friday and Saturday, so effectively the weekend, it would be 6:00 AM to 11:00 PM, so a two-hour additional window on those, on those nights. Please, Councilor Cop.
Just a question. I mean, the Super Bowl was yesterday, that's a Sunday. So what you're saying is it's not allowed on Sunday?
According to this, that would.
So, I mean, I, then it just makes sense to me that Sunday is the end of the weekend. I mean, so, I mean.
I mean, did I speak at all?
Please, yeah, we'll have a public comment now.
Go to the podium.
Come on.
So, I'm Toby, I'm one of the owners of Rise. Really, just to gain, I mean, I got, I'm locking the door at nine o'clock and I'm watching, you know, 80 cars leave the parking lot. If I could sell half of them a pizza on the way out, it would definitely help me stay open as far as making ends meet, you know, as far as payroll goes and all that fun stuff. There's a lot of times that the community's been great, they've been really receptive. It's been a cool experience, you know what I mean, like humbling. But at the same time, there's downtime, you know what I mean? There's, there's Saturdays, I can't get anybody in there Saturday from 11 to 3 o'clock. You know what I mean? Come four o'clock, I start filling back up. Do I want to not be open on Saturday during the day? No, it's Saturday during the day, you know what I mean? Like, I'm here, this is what I'm, this is what I'm for. When it snows out, I'm not going to close. I want something that somebody can be dependent on and be like, all right, that's a cool place to go no matter what's going on. Super Bowl, we worked it the other day. It was a lot of takeout right before the Super Bowl and then as soon as the Super Bowl started, my, my numbers just, you know, died. I'm receptive to anything. I'm, I'm willing to do whatever I gotta do, but my, my real goal is there are times that we are busy and if I can keep that going just for a couple more hours, it's going to make my ends meet. If I can't and I gotta lock the door and not get those extra 40, 50 pizzas sold over the year, it might be the reason why we don't make it and you see a for sale sign. You know what I mean? Like, that's not what I want to do. I want to be here, I want to raise my kids here, I want them to be proud of something we've done. And just that little bit of time, believe it or not, could help me make payroll. It could help me make some improvements. It could help me, you know what I mean? That's, that's really what I'm asking.
Yep. Makes a lot of sense. Thank you for sharing that.
Thank you.
Very helpful.
So just to remind the council that when this does go to the planning board, all the neighbors within 500 feet will be notified about the change and they'll have the opportunity to come and basically participate because they're, they're obviously not here tonight.
Right.
But that, that part of it is done by the planning board and they'll give you a recommendation based on, you know, the testimony and.
And then when it comes back to us, they'll, they'll get another.
They'll, we won't notice them, but it'll be on the agenda for the, probably March, March, last Monday, the fourth Monday in March will be on the agenda.
So to your comment, Mr. Cop, what are your?
Just a comment, I mean, you know, here we are, the Super Bowl was on a Sunday, the Daytona 500 is always on a Sunday. I just think if you're going to do this, let's do it right. I mean, let's not limit it to.
I'll agree with you.
I mean, I, I just think, you know, let, let's let the planning board dissect it. The neighbors obviously will have a lot to say and another gentleman would like to speak, so.
Please, if you don't mind just coming up to the microphone, that'd be great. Thank you.
Christopher, Christopher Yale, Greeley Road. I went to Rise Pizza, I didn't know about the ordinance that actually tells them he has to shut down at nine o'clock. But if you allow them to be open later, like on Sunday night when you talk about, yes, the Super Bowl, but now there's football. Football used to be over at seven o'clock, now it's not open till 11 o'clock now on Sundays with the Sunday night game and the Monday night game. But the patrons will decide when he's going to be successful. If he's allowed to be open from say, hey, I'm going to open at nine in the morning and I'm going to stay open till midnight. Well, if nobody's there from 10 to midnight, then he's going to close. So, you know, I like what you're saying, well, let's give him the opportunity.
Right.
But if he's open on Sunday till 10 o'clock, but nobody's coming in from, from seven to 10, then he's not going to be open, so.
If there are downtimes that aren't worth being open, but there are downtimes that are worth being open because I, I hope that.
Toby, nobody, nobody can hear you, Toby.
Yeah, you might want to go to the mic for the, that's okay.
But once, but once you get there, once the, the town knows the hours and understands it, they kind of dictate it, you know? So that's all I'm saying.
So, so Councilor Cop to that, did you have a comment before we? I was going to say.
I just, I just want to make the comment that if you go to the planning board, don't cut yourself short. Tell them what you want, explain the situation, you know, and, you know, just explain to them that if you're open till 11, but people stop coming at 10, you're going to close at 10. I mean, but don't cut yourself short, I guess is the way I'm putting it out there.
I think it'd be one thing if I had a bunch of, sorry. I think it'd be one thing if I had a bunch of complaints and.
Exactly.
You know what I mean? I, I do think that I'm going to have some issues with some neighbors. I'll be 100% honest with you. There's a group of them that were already had issues with my lighting, so I understand the light situation that you were talking about earlier. But at the same time, nobody's getting rowdy, nobody's leaving angry, you know what I mean? There's, it's, it's not a, a come in and get annihilated. I'm not running drink specials that are promoting hi- high volumes of consumption. I'm there for the families in this community and I want to make it work, you know what I mean? So if they can drive it to a point where it's like, okay, it's busy and I have that extra time, that's amazing, that helps me. Like, like I said, he said it too. I mean, if we, if we're going to be open, if it's, goes till 11, you know what I mean? And nobody's there on a Sunday after nine o'clock, it'll, it will probably shut down at nine, you know what I mean? But at the same time, on Saturday days, I want the town to know that we're open, you know? So there are, there are times that it's worth being open and not being busy, there are times that it's not. When we are busy, if we could get those extra dollars, it's definitely going to make a difference in the end.
Yep.
Ron, you want to operate amendment to this?
That's what I was going to say.
Yeah, I mean, and I think we should. Bob just wrote the same thing. I mean, I think we should go like Friday, Saturday, Sunday night, 11 o'clock. I mean.
Thursday to Saturday, Thursday to Sunday.
Because right, because right now Thursday's included in that, in that proposed change.
You want Thursday? I mean, I, I don't have a problem with that. I mean, okay.
I, I'll take what I can get and when I don't use it, I appreciate the opportunity. There's football on Mondays.
Well, they have football a lot, right? So which is, you can always find a day or a sport that's open, which is, which is fine.
There's going to be a time that it doesn't work.
My, my, my point was we always talk about the blue signs when you pull into town that say certified, business friendly, this is a great opportunity to do that. I would happily welcome an amendment and a motion if you want to give that unless others had comments as well.
You want an amendment, Mike? I mean, you want to with.
I would just a friendly amendment to push it to 11 on, with Sunday.
Yeah.
And we don't have to do the whole thing all over.
All right, that's fine. I, I meant that we change the hours of operation till 11 o'clock.
On Sunday.
On Sunday.
As well.
Okay.
In addition to.
In addition to the proposed.
Exactly.
So would someone like to read the, the motion and, okay, please.
I move to forward to the planning board for public hearing and recommendations amendments to chapter 315 zoning, section 21, Town Center District, F6, hours of operation as recommended by the ordinance committee.
Second.
As to the hours.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second.
And an amendment.
With an amendment.
Well, we took, we took it as the main motion, Thursday through Sunday until 11:00 PM.
Correct.
Is that okay?
Correct. Okay, all those in favor? Unanimous.
And, and just for the council's knowledge here, people are not required to leave at nine o'clock, that's the last customer's coming in the door. So if you're in there at 8:59, you're, it's okay to stay till as long as they're done.
There's been some Fridays that are a little gray, but.
Yeah, I know. Well, Jim Guedee was the, the captain of gray, so.
Ow, way to call him out.
Well said, well said.
Jim pushed it as hard as anybody could push it, so.
Captain of gray.
I think his Memorial Day pancakes probably started before six.
I think so, too.
Toby, thanks for coming in about this issue and Mike, thanks for raising.
Thank you. Great business, thank you.
Thanks, Toby.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to 24 dash 009, to set a public hearing date of February 26th to consider and act on an adoption of a townwide noise ordinance as recommended by the ordinance committee. So this is getting a little bit more granular in terms of this is not a zoning change, it's my understanding, but rather a.
Standalone.
Standalone ordinance. Would someone from ordinance like to give a quick overview of this?
We've been for a number of years under a lot of pressure to adopt a noise ordinance. And one of, as you can expect, the challenges are always enforceability. So even though I'm, I'm putting this forward to the council as a standalone ordinance, I have to say that it's, it's going to be difficult for whoever's responsible for enforcing to enforce it. This is a pretty standard noise ordinance. We borrowed it from Kennebunk.
Correct.
And adopted it for our, our needs and expectations. This is just a recommendation to set a public hearing, so I hope everyone gets a chance maybe to, if, to reread it, think about your neighbors, think about the kind of noise that happens in your neighborhood. One of the things we used as an example was the Falmouth Rodden Glove Gun Club, you know, that creates noise over in Falmouth and we get complaints from a gentleman on Blanchard Road about that noise. Those, but that, we did make sure that, you know, the lawful discharge of firearms was not a violation of the noise ordinance. So, for example, my husband's sons, nieces, nephews, on Father's Day, it's become a tradition, tradition to skeet shoot. Everyone's out there, so, and once or twice the police have come down to see what the gunfire's all about. And that's lawful discharge of firearms. So while it's loud, it's not that early on Father's Day and it would be allowed. But if you can think of any other, you know, situations or thing that we could discuss when we're listening to this, I mean, when we're reviewing this in the public hearing, that would be great.
Great, thank you for the summary there. Any comments or questions on this? Councilor Cop?
I read this in depth only because of what I do and all of my heavy equipment has backup alarms, which is mandated by OSHA. And I know we've run into this with our gravel pits. It's mandated by OSHA that this equipment has a backup alarm and there are different, you know, there are horns and then there are waves and, and this, you've done a pretty good job as describing what's exempt from the law, but there will be some unforeseen circumstances and like you said, Shirley, it's going to be hard to enforce. But I think you've done a pretty good job, really, I mean, but if people do think of things, I mean, obviously bring them up because there are a lot of things that are mandated that you can't get around. I mean, as annoying as they are, I mean, I wish I didn't have to have them on my records. I feel bad when I back into dump a car at two o'clock in the morning that's been in an accident and you hear this beep, 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 and then I got lights going, you know, and, but OSHA says I have to have that, so, I mean, so, but just a comment.
Council, uh, Mr. Manager, please.
I, I think the difficulty is we just need feedback because we left it in the Kennebunk form for you, but we've got to change it to our own residential zones, which is okay, not difficult.
I just noticed that.
And we also have to basically make sure people know that noise from domestic power equipment such as power saws, lawn mowers, garden tools, leaf blowers, the notorious, the biggest one that we get complaints about. My issue isn't the ordinance itself, it's the enforcement. It, it's not easy. We're going to have to most likely train our police officers, be, be certified with the right decibel meters to get the right, get the right calibration each year, as well as the code officer, because we all know it's going to be weekends and nights that these complaints are going to come in and they're going to come into the police department. So they're going to have to know how to enforce it. The violation in here is, could be, you know, up to $100 a day for these, for these violations. And the measurement procedures is very specific, I, those work well, but where we get tripped up will be on calibration certification and who has been trained and have you been properly trained? And everybody is sue happy today, so it's not going to be, it's not going to be easy to enforce and to get that immediate satisfaction when the complaint happens. It doesn't happen instantly sometimes. So I think I just wanted, I don't want to oversell this as the cure-all for anybody's, all, all our noise issues because I think those issues will still be out there. This is a start, but I think what I like about this, it's a standalone and then you could change it at any council meeting. So one council meeting, you barely have to advertise it and it's. So, one council meeting, you barely have to advertise it, and it's on your agenda, and say, all right, we want to add these three things, or we want to take these two things off. You can do that. It's not in the zoning ordinance, so it doesn't have to go back and forth to the planning board. So, I think it's a good start. I don't think you have a ton of choices in this one because of the hand you've been dealt in several cases we have ongoing around town, so, but I just would ask for patience, because it's gonna take a little time to get it really implemented.
Duly noted, thank you very much. Any other questions or comments from the council on this?
And this is Kennebunk, so I just noticed NNO, we don't have a welfare society facility. And I, and we haven't added the lawful discharge of firearms, but that, NNO don't really apply to us.
Right, this is just their current ordinance, that we're kind of using as a benchmark model that we can take from or leave.
It'd be nice if the 26th, we could get it ready, and then maybe March, we basically put it out for a public hearing, because we have a little bit more work to do on this to get it ready for prime time.
Please.
Okay, so we don't want to set a public hearing date.
You could have a public hearing, but maybe not act on it. Maybe you table it after you get public hearing and, and public feedback. But I wouldn't rush to action on this one until you were comfortable, and if you're comfortable on 26th, that's fine. But you don't have to up or down it on the 26th.
But that means, so February 26th, that's just a couple of weeks from now, so the idea would be that ordinance would have to come up with our own version of this? That we would redline or track change?
Well, it would be brand new, so it would not, there'd be no redlines. We don't own, we don't have this ordinance right now, so it'd be a brand new ordinance. It would just essentially take a lot of the Kennebunk.
Right.
References out of it. I like the enforceability, I like the way they have the definitions, the measurement procedures, and enforcement is all good. It's just cleaning up the residential zones, adding the discharge of firearms to it, you know, those are the types of things. And we can still do that again on the 26th, but if you're not comfortable on the 26th, don't feel you're rushed to approve it on the 26th, if you want one more bite at it.
So, in the next two weeks, who's going to be localizing that? Our town attorney or the ordinance committee?
We'll take care of it. Staff will work with our town attorney to clean it up and get it Cumberlandized.
Okay. Council Philson?
I think I recall the town attorney mentioning some, or when we talked about this specifically, maybe a committee or a hearing. I think it might be a, so a policy in Portland or South Portland where the, the people that are making the complaint have to go to kind of, some kind of hearing. There's some kind of like.
Portland.
Dial, it's Portland, okay. And I was just curious as to whether or not that might be something that we look into as well, just because of your point about.
Enforceability?
Enforceability, people being sue happy, also the point, which I, I think I made too early, I was trying to make now, about knocking on someone's door rather than, you know, calling the police, but if it comes to a point where people can't sit down, I mean, do we sort of force the issue and say, hey, you know? Because if it is, especially, if it's a recurring problem versus a one-off, I don't, I don't know, I just wonder if there's anything that we can take from that Portland example, or was this Kennebunk example taken specifically because we're not in kind of, we're, we're not a city?
Well, Kennebunk is having some problems with this ordinance, primarily because of enforceability and the training of the police officers and the staff. So, they have to be certified on a certain decibel meter, they have to show they've been trained, and they should have to show that they can use the decibel meter. And my goodness, there are so many decibel meters out there that it's not that difficult to use. They measure sound pretty accurately, but they have to do it.
But I think what Counselor Philson's getting at is, does it make sense to potentially have kind of an intermediary step? I know in the law, you always have to exhaust your administrative remedies before you go to court, or something like that. Hey, can you get the parties together? Like, let's, when a complaint is filed, it's a, hey, there's a public meeting where you have to come and talk with folks to try to resolve it that way before it's.
That's really painful. A notice of violation would be a lot easier. So, they, the code officer cites the person for violation of the ordinance, they're given a notice of violation with 10 days to remedy. That, that person then reports back that, okay, I've done this, I've turned off the sound system, I've done X, Y, Z, and then we get a complaint a week later. The next step is, here's your fine. I mean, you're, you're given the, you're given the ability to rectify the problem through the code officer, but to put in a, a citizen review panel that has that type of authority, I think is, is, is difficult.
It probably makes more sense for a larger city. I, I just think my, my point is, is like, you might have a graduation party, and that night, it's a one-off, right? Versus someone like us, probably they're having karaoke every, you know, two weeks or so, and I don't think I'm actually doing a, and I, I'm totally not going to ask for a karaoke exclusion in this ordinance, I promise. That said, I was just curious, because Alyssa had brought it up as being something that worked really well for enforceability, but that may be because we're talking a larger city, not a more kind of rural.
So, some of these later at night issues would be more disturbing the peace where a police officer would come in and say, listen, knock it off, or, you know, we'll cite you. And we, we have such high compliance with these type of requests that I don't think we're gonna get to the fine stage of this, which I hope would be good, which I hope would be the real thing, that it's just there, we can use it as a tool, and hopefully we won't have to use it, but.
I just wanted to add that I think this is also an opportunity for really good community policing, where they have to get out and talk to the neighbors, and they have to, you know, use their skills, and, and then they have sort of a record of it. I know that we have given dog barking violations in our town for noise violations before. I know of one person who got two, so, not me, but.
Yeah. No, go on.
Go ahead, Bailey.
I was just gonna say, I think what Tig's getting at is enforceability, and also just if it just is loose, then there's no, like, if there's accountability on both ends of the stick, it makes someone think twice about calling, right, I guess? I don't know, so.
Councilor?
Just a couple of thoughts. There might be some exemptions to this, like the Farmers Club, Fourth of July and New Year's, because I can picture somebody calling on the Fourth of July saying, hey, this guy's touching off fireworks in my neighborhood, and I don't like it. All the fireworks, all the demolition derby at the fairgrounds, just a couple of things that come to mind.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Anyone from the public have any comments on this? Please.
Dave Noonan again, Meadowland. So, I'm assuming we'll get a copy of this beforehand, or should we just go look at the Kennebunk one? To be able to take a look at it? Or is there like a timeframe for it? Like, is it like before 7?
The Kennebunk one is now online, under the agenda item for this.
Okay.
For this. So, that's first thing. We will have it posted the Thursday before with an, with the Cumberland language on it before the February 26th meeting.
Okay. Cool, thank you.
Thanks, Dave. Okay, anyone else from the public? Okay, seeing none, I would happily accept.
I'll give you a motion, Mr. Chairman. I move to set a public hearing date of February 26th to consider an act on adoption of a townwide noise ordinance as recommended by the ordinance committee.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion?
And like the manager said, it's highly likely we won't adopt it, but we can give ourselves the option if it's clean, but it will bring the public in for further discussion, which is what we hope for.
Yep, good reminder. Okay, I will call for a vote. All those in favor? Okay, unanimous, thank you. Okay, moving on to the last item of legislation and policy, to authorize, 24-010, to authorize the town council chairman to sign a letter on behalf of the town in support of the Shabig and Cumberland Land Trust purchasing property at the end of Turkey Lane. I don't know if you would be willing to maybe come up? We've got Penny Asherman, who is going to be talking to us about this kind of exciting opportunity for CCLT.
Hang up here. This is so exciting, so exciting. So, my name's Penny Asherman, I'm a resident of the town of Cumberland, and I'm also the executive director of the Shabig and Cumberland Land Trust. And I'm here tonight to talk to you about an exciting conservation opportunity in our town that CCLT has been working on for a few months. Many of you might be familiar with the Watson property at the end of Turkey Lane. It's a 100-acre plus property that abuts Rhine's Forest. And Erola Davis, the niece of Ruth and Medley Watson, has inherited the property. And she, we've been talking with her about her goals and wishes and vision for the land, and she's interested in conserving a portion of the property by selling some of the land to the Shabig and Cumberland Land Trust. So, I'm here tonight because I'm writing some grants, and would appreciate some letters of support from the town about this project. So, I'm gonna talk to you a little bit, orient you a little bit about what we're talking about. So, the property, the Watson property is located in red. You can see there, it's adjacent to Rhine's Forest, and also the Reed Family Farm and Woods, which CCLT conserved two years ago. And all the properties in green there, lighter green, are conserved land. So, it's a regional project. It has a lot of significance because there's a green conservation corridor from Wyndham through Falmouth, through Cumberland to north Yarmouth. That's about 2,800 acres of land. And so, not only is that great for conservation and movement of wildlife, but also for recreational opportunities, and really exciting. So, the other exciting thing that you can see here is that the parcel is part of an 800-acre block of forest land, and it's the largest block of forest land in Cumberland. So, this is an exciting opportunity to really preserve this large chunk of land for, for wildlife habitat. Closer, getting a closer look, the, you can see that we're interested in purchasing the wooded portion of the, of the property. The landowner is gonna stay in the house, there's a house and barn, and retain the field. Field's about 14 acres, so the entire parcel that, that she'll be retaining is 17 acres, and CCLT would be purchasing 79 acres of forest land. And you could see, it's also, it's along Turkey Lane, at the end of Turkey Lane, the improved part of Turkey Lane, and there would be a right-of-way across the field to a small parking area and trailhead access at that point. But there will also be, people could walk down the unimproved section to the bridge, and we'll probably have a trailhead down there as well. Some of the property attributes, it's 79 acres of riparian and upland forest. There's 6,085 feet of frontage on Mill Brook. It has a diverse amount of wildlife in it, cascading waterfalls. There's five cascading waterfalls, large ones, and 12 total smaller ones, so it's really beautiful property. And it has rolling terrain that's similar to Rhine's Forest, so it's, it's very attractive. And this is a photo that we took this fall of one of the waterfalls along, and it's, the granite is really attractive, and the moss and the trees along the riparian area is particularly attractive. Some of the public benefits of the property is that it provides recreational opportunities, expanding recreational opportunities for the town residents, hiking, biking, snowshoeing, fishing, hunting, nature observation, also habitat protection. Because this is a large block of forested habitat, it enables more diverse wildlife to, to reside there. So, we've been protecting that, as well as the water quality of Mill Brook, which starts at Knight's Pond and Tubby's Pond, and goes into the east branch of the Piscataqua River and the Presumscott and Casco Bay. Also provides stormwater management. As, as you know, we're seeing bigger, more frequent storms, and just having riparian areas that are gonna be able to absorb some of these massive events is really helpful. And the, the stream kind of widens out to, you know, a more like wetland-y area down by the bridge. And so, just being able to absorb some of that excess water will be helpful. Also, I think it helps contribute to our carbon storage goals that we have for the town. So, being able to have forested land that's gonna be protected forever, the trees are gonna grow, gonna be able to absorb more carbon, I think is gonna help us meet our goals for the town. And also, being able to host events. So, if we have this property, in addition to the Rhine's Forest, which is already 300 acres, we're gonna have a 400-acre really premier destination for recreation, educational events, and I think it's really spectacular opportunity for us. So, we're actually in the pretty beginning stages of this conversation. We are negotiating an option agreement with the landowner. We hope that happens in the next week, and CCLT will be purchasing the property in fee from the landowner, and we're hoping to have 12 to 15 months to raise the funds to come up with the purchase price. So, during the option period, we're gonna be raising acquisition funds, that's writing a lot of grants, and doing some private fundraising, completing due diligence, which is appraisal, surveys, title work, environmental site assessments, and also coordinating on stewardship and management plans with the town of Cumberland, working with the Lands and Conservation Commission on how we might manage this forest as a whole, so that we're finding efficiencies and, and, and also benefits of having a similar approach. And also talking with the, the trails committee about extending the trails that already exist in Rhine's Forest into the Watson property. And also working with the town on the right-of-way in a small parking area that will provide access to, directly to the Watson property. But I will say that the main access points are still gonna be Range Road and Blanchard Road at the Reed Family Farm and Woods. So, this would be a smaller access point, but it is important to, you know, have something that people can access from this, this area as well. So, my request this evening, there are several grants that are, have been due or are due in the next two weeks that we're gonna be applying for, for funds. One of them is the U.S. Forest Service Community Forest Program, which we actually applied to when we expanded Rhine's Forest with the 50 acres a few years ago, and we were awarded that money. We'd be applying also for the Land for Mains Future Grant Program, which is the state conservation fund, very competitive program, but also really the only, the only state fund that we're gonna be able to get conservation money from. And also Casco Bay Astoria Partnership, which provides smaller grants, but they're interested in water, water quality protection for Casco Bay. So, tonight, our request is that we have a letter of support from the town so that we can apply for these grants and get points. We get points, extra points for municipal support and community support. And honestly, I can't think of a better property in town to be applying these grants for, so I really hope that we can count on your support. And I look forward to coming back to you soon with more details, as soon as we have the property under contract. And I'm happy to share more details with you about that, and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Counselor Cupp had his hand up first.
I want to commend you, because this piece of property is a gem. I personally knew Medley Watson, and he had given me permission to recreate on his property for the last 20 years, with the condition that I didn't bring a bunch of people in with me. He was a grouchy old guy, but he was a good guy. This property is a gem. I mean, there are some beautiful waterfalls on this. There's great trails that exist now. Without very little work, you could connect those in a weekend. I mean, it's just a gem of a piece of property, and I commend you for going forward with this, and I hope we sign on the line, so.
Counselor Bell?
Backing up, for a couple of years ago, there was discussion about us giving up the right-of-way on, on Turkey Lane, and, and we did not do that. And I, this is such an important piece that ties into this to the accessibility, both from Route 9 and from, from. Route 9 and from Range Road. And again, I'll follow up with Ronnie, it is a spectacular piece of property. 50 years ago, or actually, I won't even tell you the exact date, we were headed in there in the month of May, group of us with a farm tractor going up to the falls. In May, there was two feet of snow this particular year in there, and it was, anyways, it was always a memorable experience. It's just a great project.
Thank you, Counselor King.
Ran into Penny a few weeks ago, and she pulled me aside to tell me about this, and I was so happy. This is something that's been on the town's radar longer than Ron and I have been on. I know my father talked about trying to get this property, and I'm grateful that Medley and his wife did nothing to develop this property. When I was on the council, I was like, sure, I'm going to go have a conversation with Mr. Watson. And I baked my loaf of pumpkin bread, and I made my appointment on a Saturday morning to go talk to him about, you know, maybe considering conservation back then. And his wife canceled. She wouldn't allow him to have the discussion. I don't know if she thought I might be too charming or whatever. I'm sure that's not the case. But I am just so grateful to all the work that the Land Trust does, and to the Watsons, and to our entire community that really values conservation.
I also really want to, I also really want to thank Eriela Davis, who has come forward, and her goal is to protect wildlife habitat. And so the big change from not having any public access to this property and potentially not having it conserved, I'm really happy that, we've been patient, and I'm glad that we reserve that access. I remember coming to the public meeting, hoping that we would eventually get the Watson property, and so I'm glad that we retained that.
That's great.
I'd like to make the motion when it's.
Sure. I'm wondering if I want to just allow folks from the public to, anyone from the public to comment on this? Okay. Go ahead, please.
Sure. I move to authorize the Town Council Chairman to sign a letter on behalf of the town in support of the Shebigan Cumberland Land Trust purchasing property at the end of Turkey Lane.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. I know one of our counselors has stepped out for a moment, but I don't.
She's voting for it.
I would think so as well. Penny, great work on this.
Great job.
So I will call for a vote. All those in favor? Okay, we have six in favor and one currently absent.
Let me know when you start your fundraising.
Yeah, well.
Very much.
You guys don't remember this, but this was my first month on the town, working for the town. And Jeff Porter, the bad Jeff, not the good Jeff that we have up the street, but the bad Jeff, was the town counselor, he was the chairman. He took Penny and I to this waterfall, and he believed it was part of the Rhine's Forest that we were going under contract with Dale Rhines. And Medley Watson was standing on the other banking, looking at us, ready to start screaming at us to get off this property. We were on the wrong piece of property. There's another waterfall in the Rhine's Forest currently that he didn't take us to, but took us to this one, and it was spectacular. The Portland Press Herald reporter that night took the picture of this is what the property the town was buying, not even close. But we followed Jeff, and we still love him, and it was, it was something that, when she started showing the pictures, I started laughing, because that's exactly the waterfall we all got in trouble for. So it's awesome to see that this is, this is coming full circle, and we're back where we started.
Yeah, that's great. Thanks again, Penny. Okay, that concludes legislation and policy. We now move to new business, and I will start at my left with Counselor Cop.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to remind everybody in the audience that the public is going to vote on March 5th on this affordable housing project. The Town Council is not going to vote on it, other than we have eight votes. 7,292 other people in this community are going to vote on this project, other than us sitting in this room, including the manager. We're not pushing this down anybody's throat. We decided before this that we were going to put this to referendum so that the public would vote on this, not the Town Council. We thought it was a worthy project, and I believe the vote was seven to one to send this forward. Seven, six.
Five to two.
Five to two, I'm sorry, five to two, to send this to the public to vote. We're not pushing this.
No, it was seven, nothing to vote.
No, it was actually, correction, it was five to two to move forward and to enter into the MOU with the developer, and it was six to one.
And that's what I'm getting at. We are not promoting, forcing, the public is going to vote on this. It will be the general public that decides whether this project goes forward, not this Town Council. We all have different opinions, nobody knows how we're going to vote, the public will decide whether this project goes forward. And I just want that to be clear. We're not stuffing this down anybody's throat. People are making it look like we're forcing this on everybody. We're not forcing anything. We could have voted as a board or a body to send this project forward, but we decided that the public ought to have some input. To me, that was the right thing to do. I just want to put that out there. And I have my $20 for the Forage Food Pantry, which is a very worthy cause. That's all I have.
Thank you very much, Counselor Cop.
Next meeting, we're going to start on that end, work this way, so I don't have to follow it and feel like I'm.
We can ping pong.
Feel like I don't have anything intelligence to say. That's great, Ronnie, I appreciate what you said there. I think the follow-up to that also is that this has not been a rushed process, as others have said also. It's been years in the making, and it's had its growing pains, and so I don't feel like it's been rushed. It's, but I'll have to second what Ronnie says, the public will decide this, and we'll move forward, either way. That's all I got.
Thank you, Counselor Bell. Counselor Philson.
I will say, just because we're on the Ron Cop train tonight, and someone had, I think, made a comment during, public comment possibly, about him being forced out. When I joined the council two years ago, I was, and I don't know who did the seating chart, but it was brilliantly done, because I was sandwiched between Counselor Cop and Counselor Bell. And I was sitting up here, kind of shaking in my boots, no idea what I'd gotten into. I don't think there's any counselor who made me feel more welcome than Counselor Cop. Bob, you were amazing too, but Ron, in your way, kind of giving me little notes and tidbits on things that I might not understand, and also making me feel as though it was okay that I didn't understand, and that knowledge would come in time. I am so grateful to you for that. And I just, if you feel like you're being pushed out, maybe you do, but I hope that is not the case and not by me.
I absolutely am leaving on my own will. I've sat up here now for almost 18 years. My father is ready to retire, so I've got a lot more on my shoulders now, and I just feel that it's time that I step aside and let somebody else take over. I am not being pushed out, this is on my own will, so, and thank you for the kind words.
My pleasure.
You're going to have a big drop in income too, Ronnie, huh?
Yeah.
Second, sorry, Penny, I did not start a coughing attack to not vote. I'm very excited about this project, I'm very, very glad. I would have, I would vote with the, with the crew in favor of the letter, so thank you for that. And then just an update, Mr. Manager alluded to this earlier in his comments, but I've been kind of exploring different ways in which the town can engage and kind of coordinate DEI activities with the school district, with other municipalities. I think there's a lot of kind of great programming and education that's out there, so trying to kind of unpack how we can really kind of tag team with groups and kind of expand, whether that be, you know, liaising with the library on the programming that they have, or kind of, you know, working with other communities about, you know, things that have worked and things that haven't. But just really, this is the type of initiative that isn't just about Cumberland, it's not just about North Yarmouth, it's not just about the school, we are a community, and we all interface with each other all the time, so finding ways that we can kind of move that needle in a more collaborative way. So it's been some exciting conversations, and we'll have kind of more to come when we talk about that on the 26th. And that's it for me.
Great, thank you very much. Counselor Douglas.
Thank you, Mark. Just wanted to give a shout out to the Recreation Department for an awesome family fun day on February 3rd at Valhalla. I'm not sure if anyone made it, but it was really amazing, and I think also a continuation of some of the events we saw over the summer, and just showed how much the need is there for a lot of the families in the community. Just wanted to give an update on the town manager hiring. Myself, Shirley, and Tig have been spearheading the hiring for the new town manager. We closed the application process last week. I'm feeling pretty great about the candidate pool we have, and we're hoping, we're meeting this week to review applications in the hopes of starting to extend interviews into next week. The Playground Subcommittee met last Tuesday, we spent some time outlining a potential process timeline and budget in different phases of the project. It was a really great opportunity to meet some of different members of the community, really looking forward to seeing what we can all accomplish together. And then the other item I wanted to bring up is comprehensive plan. I know this has been a lot, a hot topic of conversation as we've gone through this affordable housing project, and I would like to put this on the radar, Council Chair, for April to discuss what this looks like as we go forward. I know we're not going to, going to start the process of it now, but I'd like to kind of review where we're at, you know, from the goals we set in 2014, how we're doing now, and set some, you know, groundwork for when the new town manager starts, and just kind of get the wheels in motion prior to that time. And then, Bill, I know there had been some technological issues from the last community meetings. Do you know when the video will be available online for the most recent one?
The only one we televised was the first one.
With the first one? We didn't record the last one?
No.
Okay, good to know. Awesome. That's it for me.
Great, thank you very much. And Mr. Manager, if we could just make a note for the April comp plan discussions, just to kick that, start that stuff. Okay. Counselor Reed.
Quick question for you, Bill. I emailed you this week about when we approved the funds to run water across the Turnpike on Blackstrap Road. What is the cost of that ballpark?
$250,000.
So I want to kind of follow up with what Ronnie brought up early about, we've been transparent, we've given the public a chance to talk and to hear the neighborhoods. I'm asking the council to do the exact same thing up on Blackstrap Road before we go forward with the spending and bringing water across. Let's call a spade a spade. If we approve the water going across, the development in Chase's Pit is a go. If we don't, it's not a go. I think there's two questions, the two issues here is, A, should we be bringing, spending a quarter of a million dollars in taxpayer funds so a developer can come in and put a development in of homes or condos, or whatever they're calling it? Should we be spending money to do that? That's the first question. The other question is, what are the people in the neighborhood thinking? We're not, we are not giving them a chance to come in and speak pro or con about this project. So I'm asking the council to put on the agenda for, we can do it sometime in their future, before we spend the money, to have, hold a public hearing to talk about expending $250,000 to run water across the Turnpike, and to give the people in West Cumberland a voice, because we've heard them repeatedly come in here and say, when are we going to get a chance to speak? When are we going to? I understand it's going to go to the Planning Board, but the Planning Board, the Planning Board is not the Town Council. We owe it to the people in West Cumberland to give them a chance to have, to have a public hearing on this. And so I'm asking the council to hold a public hearing on spending $250,000 to run water across the Turnpike.
Counselor Reed, thank you.
You already authorized it last year with the budget approval.
I realize that, Bill, but we haven't spent it, we can, we can unauthorized it.
You can, it's been designed, it's been permitted, it's been everything you can go through.
Can I, can I make a call?
Sure, go ahead, Bill.
It's funny, I actually called Bill about this today. We had a brief conversation just about West Cumberland in general, and, you know, there's been a lot of conversation about Chase's Pit, what does the future look like, and just really trying to come up with more, a more strategic identified plan of what it is, and having the conversation with residents there, because I, you know, in talking, I live in that area, and talking with some neighbors this weekend, I think it just reiterated that there's a lot of confusion surrounding, A, what the process is, B, what's happening, and really, how can we connect the dots for everyone to understand, you know, with the conversations about the roundabout that we're trying to get funding for, with conversations about developing that area down that corridor. I know there's been rumblings of, you know, the bank, or the bank and the gas station, so how can we really have some sort of community meeting, some sort of dialogue, and also maybe some, like, larger community planning for that? I don't know what that looks like, but I think that might be more productive than untabling this, because I think running the water line there is beneficial for some of the residents there as well, unless I'm wrong.
It stops at Chase's Pit, so.
Is it benefiting any residents?
Probably the first $250,000, no. The master plan was to extend it up Blackstrap Road. If Portland Water District ever built a tower in South Gorham, that would benefit us, Gorham, Wyndham, and Falmouth. But that's a long way out, and we may have to build a tower on Blueberry Hill before that ever happens. It's just not getting any traction.
Tig, I am asking the council to give the people in West Cumberland particularly a voice on this project, a voice, a voice on whether or not they want to, they think that we should be spending $250,000 of taxpayer money. You know, I think this goes beyond it, the, we're doing this to benefit a developer, yet we've got people on Bruce Hill Road that really have water problems and went on a drought, we're not going after that yet. I think there's a lot, we've heard one thing, whether, I don't, whatever side of this affordable housing you're on, the public, there has been a perception that we've shoved it down their throat and we're not transparent. I don't believe that's true. I don't agree with the project, but I don't, I think the council's been fair on this. And I'm asking us to, to, to give the public a say on this Chase's Pit. And I'm asking you to, to hold off spending that 250 till we've had the chance for the town to come in and weigh in.
So 36 units of affordable housing that would be guaranteed for 30 years of affordability is not a good trade-off. I mean, that's what you're saying. I mean, our investment is fairly small compared to what we will get as a community for 30 years, Mike. Those affordability covenants are at 120% of AMI for 30 years, for 36 of those homes, 50% of that neighborhood.
What's, Bill, and we, you may have a good point, but what's wrong, what do, I don't want to say you're not afraid of anything, but what are we afraid of as a group to letting this go to public hearing and having the public come in and weigh on it? Why not?
Because you set a overlay district for West Cumberland that allows this to happen, and now that it's happening, you're basically taking the rulebook and throwing it out. The developer who proposed this, David Chase, came to me years ago with another project that was all warehousing and tractor-trailer trucks. I said, no, thank you. That's not the gateway I want to see into West Cumberland. I would rather see a neighborhood than an abandoned gravel pit that'll just sit there like a hole in the ground forever if it's not redeveloped. This was a positive redevelopment project that I believe will be much more beneficial to the community than, you know, 400,000 square feet of warehousing. So for me, I just, we have the rules in place that basically if you follow the rules for the overlay district, you go forward. If, if the town doesn't want to go forward, he could put the water line in, and he could, I don't know, maybe propose less affordable units.
He could. But Bill, this is not your decision or my decision. This is a, this should be a decision by the council as a whole on whether or not to hold a public hearing and hear from the public about spending $250,000 that will, in all essence, approve a 72-unit development. We owe it to the public to let them come in and, and come in and let's hear and let's talk to the neighborhood. We're not talking to the neighborhood now, and we owe it to them.
But every time we're going to have a development that somebody doesn't like, we're going to say. But every time we're gonna have a development that somebody doesn't like, we're gonna say, okay, we're gonna have a council hearing on a new development. That's what you're saying, Mike. The rules are being followed that are outlined in our ordinance and you're asking to change the rules.
I'm asking to hold a public hearing to let the people of West Cumberland have a voice in this bill. That's what I'm asking for and I, I think we owe it to the council. So, Mr. Chairman, I'm asking that this goes on an agenda, that we hold a public hearing about spending $250,000 to run water from over the Turnpike to Chase's Pit.
So duly noted. Thank you for the request.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilperson King.
Is that all? Did you?
That's all I got.
Well, I just wanted to respond to that one comment, and I did speak at the planning board a while ago when it first showed up. My concern, I have two concerns about it. One, that particular development, at what point do we get to, does anybody get to decide the size and scope of the project? And my second point is, we're saying they're following the rules or whatever, but they're calling these, this development condominiums. And by any common sense definition, because I looked it up in a bunch of locations, condominiums mean shared walls, but the legal definition being pushed through with this one is shared land. And I have a third concern for the resident, potential residents who might live there. You know, half of them living in affordable housing and half of them in market rate housing, and they have an HOA. Is their voice equal to, can the HO, this is a question probably for the planning board and maybe someone will pick the question up and ask the planning board, but let's say the HOA decides they need a community pool and everyone's gonna chip in, would that then be an obligation of the people living in the affordable housing? I think that gets kind of tricky and kind of sketchy. So I have given this, you can see I've given this a little bit of thought, and I'm happy for it to go through the process, but I want all the information on the table so that we can talk about it or the people can talk about it.
Well, you were given, a legal opinion was basically brought forward from the town attorney that basically said the model is correct and is allowable. A condominium model is the use of the land, how the land is used. It's either common use or individually owned. The structure is different. We've got these models all over town and mostly in our senior housing developments.
If you go to any, I looked in several dictionaries though, several dictionaries, and the common sense definition, and they even go as far as, is it the, is it the sheetrock or is it the two-by-four that you have in common?
But just, but just to be clear, our town attorney has issued an opinion?
And that's, I get that.
If someone wants to engage other councils, they have a second opinion, they can certainly do.
I do get that. All right. So I'm just gonna move on if you don't mind with my items. So.
Go ahead, Shirley.
Oh, you want to speak to that issue? Yeah, I think that's.
Go ahead if you want.
No, I have other.
I mean, I know where Mike's coming from, and I wasn't on board with this to start with, but the more I talked about it, the 30-year affordability became more enticing. I'm hoping that the planning board, and I'll be at the planning board meetings because I don't like the sounds of as many houses as they have there, but I also don't like the looks of that abandoned gravel pit that's an eyesore. I would love to see some type of development in there. And I was under the understanding that they were gonna go to the Methodist Road with the water line. Am I wrong?
All we, all the town council authorized was $250,000 in last year's budget approval. That came from the TIF committee to the full, full council and it was approved with the budget last year. So that's, as far as it goes, that's where the ultimate goal would be, yes.
Right. But regardless, I mean, David's entrance to the pit, there actually is two proposed. One is on Blackstrap and one is on Lower Methodist Road. I was under the opinion that it was gonna go to the lower, end of Lower Methodist Road, which for fire protection, and everybody knows that it's been contaminated wells down there for 40-plus years now, which are clean now, but the feasibility of it happening again is possible. And I know where you're coming from, Mike, and I, I agree with you, it's a lot of money, but there's a benefit. And I, and I don't want to benefit a developer, don't get me wrong, because I don't, but I would like to see some affordable housing in West Cumberland. Do I want to see 70-something down there? No, I do not, but I do want to see something happen down there. So if the town's willing to spend some money to make something happen down there, I think it is worth it. And don't get me wrong, I don't want to spend a quarter of a million dollars to benefit David Chase. I want to benefit some people in this town.
So are you, are you in favor, Ron, of a public hearing?
I don't know, Mike, because I think you're gonna draw the same people that the squeaky wheel gets the grease. I mean, and you know who they are as well as I do. I mean, I, I know what their opinion's gonna be, but I don't think town-wide it would be that opinion, no different than this affordable housing referendum's gonna be. I mean, I know where it's coming from. I think there's a lot of people that don't want to see any development in this town. I'm not one of them. I think we need to build something affordable. There is nothing, and I don't agree with the affordability price what it is today. I mean, my idea of affordability is $250,000, but that's not what we're up against now. I totally agree with where you're coming from, but I just, I don't, I think we've made a commitment. They're gonna bore a line underneath the Turnpike, which I'm sure that's the bulk of the cost to get the water over there and then the rest of it's trenching. I think there's a benefit. We're gonna spend a quarter of a million dollars to get it a third of the way to where we want to be, so.
Thank you all for your comments on that topic in particular.
I just wanted to caution us not to make a mistake that it's only West Cumberland people that are concerned about this project, because it goes back to what we, we all acknowledged earlier, there are people in the town that think we need to solve the school problems before we.
Can I just say something? I am so tired of listening to the school problems, because we have built 600 houses, 600 houses since 2006, and we have 200 less kids in the school from Cumberland. Look it up, it's a fact. The nonsense that we're smashing these schools apart because of what we're doing as a community is, is just not right. So every time we use the school as a crutch to basically block affordable housing, I think it's, I think it's wrong and I think it's, it's gotta be challenged, because the number of homes we've built, the things we should be looking at is look at the volunteerism that has dropped in the last 20 years with the fire department. We have 59% less call hours from our call company than we did, you know, 20 years ago. We are just pricing ourselves out of this community and we need more affordable housing to protect the types of people we want to live here, to volunteer, to help, to coach our Little League teams, to teach in our schools, to work in our public works departments. We're not gonna get that by continuing to pretend this is, is not gonna, it's not, it's not our problem. If it's not our problem, then whose problem is it? Who's, no developer is gonna take this on. This is a partnership with a developer to make half those units become affordable and that's for 30 years, not just for one and done type of thing. So I'm sorry, to me, I can't say, be silent anymore, because what we're doing is, is we're going in the right direction. These projects don't happen overnight. They take years to implement and they take years to develop. This didn't happen in six months. It's been three years in the making trying to get us there. And if, if he can't basically produce affordable covenants that are every year enforceable so somebody isn't getting priced out because somebody wants to build a pool, then that's not a good set of documents. And we will make sure the planning board has the documents that are enforceable and we as staff can enforce them as well. This is, is way too important of a subject and when we lose these opportunities, developers aren't gonna come forward and say, hey, let's work with the town, because I got to the starting line and the rug was pulled out from under me. And I, I just don't want to see that done and I apologize if you're offended by my tone. It's not intended to be offensive. It's, it's just passion.
Mr. Manager, can you confirm when the planning board date is for this project? Is that on the calendar?
Tentatively it's supposed to be March, but the planner and I met with the town attorney today in reviewing of the first draft of their affordability documents, and I, I don't think they're gonna be ready. We've still got a lot of work to do. And I would say it's probably closer to April.
Okay.
Mike, would a happy medium be to just hold some sort of community meeting in general?
That's what I'm wondering too. No, that's what I'm wondering, I was agreeing with you.
To hold some type of community meeting, you know, let's say in early June, late May, to really just talk about where this project sits at, where the, the roundabout sits at, what the long-term plan is, you know, to really have some dialogue about what people are looking to see in that corridor and maybe establish some next steps. I just, I would agree with the town manager, and I know this isn't necessarily a debate, but it seems to walk it back right now feels like there's been a lot of opportunity to not, like it just feels like we've made the decision and that is where it lives. And I don't know that like the most productive meeting would be to talk about this. I think there's a lot of bigger picture items that need to be discussed and established and understood. I don't know that this topic is, is the one to talk about.
Yeah, and I respect that, Bailey, but I, I think we're gonna spend it, we're gonna spend that amount of money in it, and we're doing it to benefit a developer. We owe the public the opportunity to come in and make public comments in a town council meeting, and I want to be able to look these people all in their face and say, at least I try to advocate for you to have a voice in this. And while it may be easy just to rub a stamp or to keep it going, I think we owe the, we owe the public. And so, I mean, the council is, is the majority, doesn't want to, doesn't want to give the public that opportunity, then, you know, stand up and say, no, I don't, I don't want you to have the opportunity to have a public hearing. That's what it comes down to, so.
Thank you. Shirley, did you have other?
I just wanted to apologize to the manager, because I set him off with my school comment that it's in reference to the 22 portable classrooms that we currently have, and I'm not saying we need to get rid of them immediately, because the state's paying for half of them, and that's a good thing, but we do have to see our community as a whole. All right, enough on that. We had our first meeting of the Library Expansion Committee last week. We discussed the many questions that people have about plans, about things that have already been done. Bill's going to come to our next meeting in the beginning of March to share the work that's been done on it to date, because some, most of the people on the Library Advisory Committee weren't around when we moved the, the Historical Society over with the plans to eventually connect the two. That's all, the hope is to have that all done with privately raised funds. I agree with you about the fun day I drove by. That was amazing. We have a workshop on the 26th to discuss the cost sharing that Bill, Bill mentioned with the school. I think those numbers are pretty interesting. We have a rec committee meeting Thursday night. I'm looking forward to hearing the playground proposal. I attended, last Wednesday I attended the interviews for a new police captain. They were very interesting. There were four of them, very, very interesting, very, each one brought some strengths, and I believe after talking to Bill that an offer's been made, but I'll leave it up to them to share. Tomorrow night, there is a tri-board meeting. Tomorrow night, we're meeting with the Town of North Yarmouth Selectmen, or Select, Board of Select People and the Cumberland Town Council and the MSAD 51 Board of Directors. That's right here at 6 o'clock in council chambers. And I would like to submit for the record, I don't know how I got it, I don't know if any of you have seen it, a letter from the Lands and Conservation Committee. I don't know if everybody's seen it, so I would like to, I don't know, what do you feel about, I mean, it's a public document.
I don't know what it's about.
I mean, it is a public document. We haven't had an opportunity to discuss it, but it's.
It's the Lands and Conservation, they sent a, a letter on, they met last week, and I spoke to Denny, Denny Galladet in the parking lot about it, and.
I haven't seen it.
What's that?
I have not seen it.
You have not seen it?
I would be typically with the.
What would you recommend, Mark?
I would recommend that we wait until the, all the council has seen it before we submit something. We have time on that issue. That's a recommendation. We've got another meeting before any voting officially takes place.
I just didn't know. It was dated February 6th and today's the 12th, so.
We received it in the email today, today. We received it today. That was a draft.
It was received today?
Today.
Okay. All right.
Before the meeting. No, but I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mark.
I would also just say that the Lands and Conservation Christian Mike Schwinn is amazing about coming and answering questions, so if we are, you know, going to kind of address this publicly, it would be great to have.
Ask him to come too.
Mike, yeah, exactly, Mike and the subcommittees and anyone from the LCC, excuse me, there as well.
Yep, that makes sense. Did you have anything else?
Nope, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Last, I guess, piece of new business, in addition to the tri-community meeting that Shirley mentioned tomorrow night, we have our last community meeting on the 29th of this month. I think it's a leap, leap year, so we have a 29th in February at 6:00 PM at Valhalla relating to the affordable housing proposal that is on the March 5th ballot. So just put that in your calendars of February 29th at 6:00 PM at Valhalla. If you have not been to one or if you would like to come to another one, the more the merrier. So with that, I think that's it from new business.
Just a question, the meeting tomorrow night, is that?
That is here in council chambers, correct, yep.
What time, Mark?
6:00 PM, I believe, as well, yep.
Thanks.
Okay. With that, I would accept the motion to adjourn.
So.
Okay. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.